Clark will call this meeting of the zoning board of appeals to order April 19th. First order of business is meeting minutes.
Is it forum, Mr. Chair?
Thank you, pardon?
Open forum.
You're okay, go for open forum then.
I don't have anything but the board does have something.
Annual town means, annual town election.
Introduce yourself to us.
My name is Vinnie Flork. I'm the capstone, I'm the senior capstone with Jeff, Joe, and other crew members in the land use management department.
So for us less sophisticated guys that didn't go to Western Academy, it's an internship, correct?
Yes, sorry. I should explain that before, but.
That's all right, that's okay.
That was my bad. So, um, annual town elections coming up on May 2nd. You can vote from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. at Stony Brook in WA. And if you're not sure where to vote, call town clerk or website, check the website.
Thank you, welcome. Okay, so let's go back to meeting minutes for Wednesday, March 15th. That was a zoo meeting. And all we did was continue 73 Brookside Road without discussion. Anybody have any questions or comments on that? I was supposed to be on that call when I was stuck on an airplane, so you guys handled it well.
Quickest meeting ever.
Yeah. We have a motion to approve the minutes. So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the next set of meeting minutes are from February 15th. Anybody have anything on those? Questions, comments, corrections? Seeing none, can we have a motion to approve these minutes?
Do we have to delete that draft?
Once you approve them, we delete drafts and we provide the final script for posting.
So we have a motion at a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so first item on the agenda is 73 Brookside Road. Haven't seen you guys in a month of Sundays. Welcome back. Tell us about this new and improved plan of yours.
Mr. Chair.
Hang on a minute. We have a motion to, okay, so we want to seat Mr. Earl on this.
And it might be worth pointing out that you would have four votes available to you.
Yeah.
Mr. Fitzgerald, Mr. McKay, Mr. Burko, and Mr. Earl. So it's up to you whether or not you do want to proceed because you wouldn't need four out of four.
Yeah, we'll proceed, we'll present the information we have and we'll. Okay. You're up. Alrighty. Damien Demetrius with Conoco Engineers and Scientists at 4 First Street in Bridgewater, Massachusetts. Here representing Mag Macyle, refer to him as Mike, for the project location, 73 Brookside Road in Westford. We're coming here for you guys for two variances, as discussed at the first meeting. We haven't been back here since November, Scott kind of, it's been some time. We've spent some time working through the plans, making sure everything was kind of, you know, there was a little back and forth trying to make sure these plans are, you know, what Mike wanted and kind of meeting some of the concerns that you guys had previously raised. What those were was, you know, the two variances are for the parking space location near property line. Again, it's an existing non-conforming lot, which we have pulled it back. I think the previous concern was the front entrance and the corner. As I think Joe can better, I can point on the screen, but it's the corner located next to the juxtaposed piece of property that comes there. So that was previously, you know, less than a foot off of the property line. We've increased that to about six feet. And we've also, you know, and then from the other side, we've brought in the island along that front. The parking along the southern portion of the property, or actually I think it is the western portion, we'll call it plan bottom, the bottom of the plan there. That's mostly stayed the same. Again, it's existing. You can see that there's those steep slopes where that handicap parking is. There's currently pavement there. We don't see, you know, considering this is a redevelopment project, we don't see it as, you know, a benefit of anyone adjusting that property, you know, the setbacks from that property line. There's already parking there. The grades and everything worked out. We're trying to keep, again, keep this property, you know, with as minimal disturbance and kind of make it a better use for what it is. So I think we've taken into consideration your concerns with the parking there. We actually went down from 21 to 19 spaces. And basically those two spaces were removed along that top edge of the page near the railroad tracks. And then we also, there was, there was concerns with the loading ramp behind the building, you know, getting stuff, vehicles in that area on that, again, bottom of page. The loading is now in the rear of the building, along with the dumpsters and everything like that. So we've spent some time reconfiguring the lot to kind of make it more efficient and, you know, aid in some of the concerns that were brought up at the last meeting. The other variance that we're going for is the secondary use. You know, still going with a restaurant and an office space above. We again, I believe that that's the best use of this property. We're trying to take a developed lot and get the most use out of it, you know, for our client, for the town, you know. In this area, there are other multi-use lots on there across the street. There's a multi-use building and then there's additionally a mini mall that's not very far from the location. So it's not very, you know, different than the buildings and the structures in that area. We've also, you know, there was concern with the architectural appearance. I think the original building was very much a commercial, you know, office looking building. You know, we've come back with a revised, more aesthetically pleasing building. You know, we have front windows, a little bit more chamfer to the roof line. You know, this architectural was, you know, a little more developed to help, you know, meet more of the side, you know, the aesthetic appeal of that area. And it's all, you know, there's multiple two-story buildings throughout the area. It's not going to stand out as, you know, a significant second use for that structure. We did other things that kind of came across with the design of the building in these updates. The footprint of the building increased. You can actually see it in that structural plan. You can see the boundary of the existing footprint. It's best noticeable in the bottom, or it's actually the second story, but the bottom right-hand corner plan there, there is that boundary of existing building. We basically squared it off and then extended it. The extension forward is the same as it was previously. We basically squared off the corner where there was the previous fridge and freezer area. So, you know, again, expanding the building for, you know, getting the most out of the property as we can. You know, we're meeting all of the other town regulations, bylaws, you know. We've gone to the planning board, we've prevented stormwater, we're with conservation commission as well. Engineering peer review has occurred, you know, I think we've satisfied most of those. We haven't gotten the response or any additional comments from the engineering peer review yet. So we want to maintain all of those things. We see it as a benefit to the town, as, you know, increased revenue for the client, the town, you know, and the secondary use isn't outside of the normal limits. Other things have been added to the plans such as landscaping, you know, the turning analysis for the fire department, you know, zoning districts, you know, other concerns and stuff like that. We've added septic plans, other comments that have come in from the other town members that I'm not going to bog down with that absorbing amount of information. So we'd like to obviously hear from the board and if there's additional comments, you know, if there's any other concerns or questions, and go from there.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. I still think parking's an issue on this site. I was surprised to hear that you took parking away because here's my simple analysis. You got 24 seats in a restaurant. If you get 24 people in there and you get two people per car, that's 12 cars. Then you gotta have some help. So throw in another three, so now we're up to 15. And now you got 1,800 square feet roughly upstairs. You know, your parking is maxed out, you know, and Westford is famous for maxing out parking.
Okay.
You go down to Cornerstone Mall, worst designed parking place in the world. You know, the older buildings are fine because they didn't, they didn't scrimp on parking, but I just think that the parking is an issue and, you know, I hope that the pizza joint is really busy and that you have a lot of cars in there, but, you know, you can't, you know, safety is an issue. So.
Respond to that?
Sure.
Yeah. So again, I think a big part of this project and what might not come to the forefront for this board is we're in a riverfront area, obviously off of Gisenbrook. And increasing the impervious and doing those types of, you know, redesigns to the site would cause headache for the conservation commission, all of those addition, you know, wetland resource areas. We're trying to limit, you know, we're not trying to increase the amount of impervious or anything to that extent. I think seats wise, we're less than the original pizza place. And we're actually still within the town zoning bylaws and parking requirements. So they have the three, you know, three seats per spot and, you know, we're below that and we actually have more parking than is required. I believe where we were required 17 spaces, we have 19. We were at 21, we've reduced it due to setbacks.
Yep. Like I said, doesn't mean the bylaws are right. So another issue that I really have is, and I'll correct you, there are no two-story buildings in that area other than the school, the old school building.
Residences?
Residential houses, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that, I mean.
Small houses, none of them are 3,000 square feet. That's Nav Nasset. They're all smaller capes, ranches, couple of splits thrown in. Some of the older, bigger homes, there's a couple on Nav Nasset Street, but for the most part, you know, this is going to be the biggest show over there. You know, and I think, you know, we had someone who was here at the very first meeting and that was a concern of the neighbors, was that they didn't want an overpowering structure. And, you know, in my personal opinion, I think you're overpowering the lot with a two-story structure. You know, we'd love to see a restaurant go in there. You know, I would love to see a restaurant go in there in a one-story building. I just don't think the mixed use is the, that's the appropriate area. You know, it's a neighborhood business and it should be a neighborhood business. You know, the buildings that are across the street are mixed use, but they've been there forever. Used to be a barbershop, it's a tax place, you know, a beauty salon, it was all that kind of neighborhood stuff. And I think that's what it should remain. I know there's a proposed issue with the fire. Just so happens that this fellow right here can probably address that. And I know he might have a concern, Dan?
Just looking at the template that you chose, where in fact did you get the template from? From where you get that from?
We created that, you know, using AutoCAD's auto turn software.
I'll stop you right there. Because you need to see the assistant town engineer Jeremy Downs. Because we had to create a specific template for our tower truck.
Okay.
And looking at this, just by the graphics, you have the tower truck going past the entrance to about where the railroad tracks, then backing into that parking lot of that little business across the street, the B&amp;B Tax Service, then to pull in. What if the, what if the guys aren't paying attention and they back into somebody's car or the building? That's, right there, that's, that's not acceptable.
Yeah, so that is understood. You can see, you know, with the existing parking lot, again, we're trying to keep that, that main parking area. We're not trying to regrade, recreate a site that's already there. So I spoke with Jeremy Down and the, Mike Delaney, correct me if I'm wrong?
Denny, yep.
Yeah, Denny, keep pronouncing that wrong, I had to apologize to him a few times. Making the sweep around that corner to that, around that existing utility pole and then again, that slope that goes into the parking lot there, it's just, given the site conditions, it's very difficult. So I produced this for Mike, you know, just to have something, to present something. I understand that that's not ideal. I, you know, it's not the right way to go about it. And if, and I was doing a completely new, redeveloped lot, then I would have made sure that that works. So I spoke with Mike, he understood the concerns, the issues of that site parking layout or of the existing site conditions in which, you know, kind of prohibit the truck from making a clean entrance into the site. And his only, you know, concern was, he would allow it, he was comfortable with it as long as we made sure that the building was sprinkled and up to code to make sure that, you know, even the second story, the office area, had sprinklers in it so that it would, you know, in a fire, an emergency, would be able to, you know, have that extra layer of protocols or of safety before the fire ladder truck could get there. I understand that that, that turning isn't, you know, a normal way of going about that.
Any other comments from the board, questions?
There's a comment in here about snow removal. Have you guys addressed that?
Yeah, snow removal, it's probably not shown on the plans that's presented to you guys, the plot plans. There is snow removal shown on the site plans that is presented to the planning board. I believe it is, it's getting pulled up right now. It'd be on the layout page. So right there. So the majority of the snow removal, you know, we show snow storage areas along kind of the property line at the bottom of the page there. We want to keep it away from the wetland areas in the riverfront. We want it to kind of pass across the pavement into the drainage features so that it gets treated if there's any, you know, you know, particular matter that, you know, from sanding or, you know, anything that gets pushed in that area, we want to make sure that, you know, it drains towards the basin. So we have it all against that edge, you know, towards the property line. Mike is actually the owner of the building that, and the home that is south, you know, on plan south there. So that's what we've done for snow storage areas.
So if you move the parking lot five feet off the property line, right here?
Yep.
And you push snow there, you're going to be pushing snow across the property line. Where it says snow storage, right there. If that asphalt's only five, six feet off, when you go to plow and put snow there, you're going to put on the other property.
So again, the other property is Mike's property there and then.
Today.
Yeah, today, understood. But, you know, there is a steep slope there. If we go to the drainage plans, you can see that that, you know, area has a steeper slope against that edge there. So it would have some vertical storage before it made its way over that property line. You know, we are limited with that in the existing site conditions. We have the existing septic field in the back and then we had to, again, put that proposed detention basin in the back there, which we are, you know, can't, can't put snow there either. You know, again, it, dealing with the existing site, you know, I think this is a good plan representation. The hatch that's going to the left there is the reduced pavement area. And then the hatch that's going to, or the hatch that's going to the right, that cross hatch angular, is where we're going to be removing pavement. No, not that hatch, Jeff, yeah, let me see, I got the pointer. This up here. So that's the removed pavement area. And then same up here, you know, and even along, again, along the back here, this, granted the building will be coming forward. So this is all to remain. This is all paved area that's going to remain. You know, so we're reducing it from, you know, the snow conditions that were occurring before. You know, we're only adding area that they can, you know, plow into.
So would it be close to say that the impervious area of that parking lot is about 6,000 square feet?
The impervious area?
So in other words, the parking lot, the blacktop of the parking lot, is that about 6,000 square feet?
I believe here, I'll pull it up online, Mike, I don't have it off the top of my head. If you scroll up to this page, we, I think we have our area breakdown. Am I incorrect there? No, down, 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 down. On that, where we have the legend there, is it not part of the legend? I'll look it up on my sheets. No, it's not there.
I mean, if you look at the size of the building, look at the size of the parking lot, so, let's say, let's call it 5,000 square feet. So, once again, in my simple mind, if you've got 5,000 square feet of snow, it's not all going to fit in that area.
Okay, you know, if you, you know, snow storage, you know, I, we're going to, it's going to be snow where the drivers are able to put it. If they can't fit it on the site, you know, it's usually, the solution is that it's trucked off. You know, it occurs in many of the projects that I work on. You know, again, we have an existing condition. If there wasn't a snow concern before, I don't think that there would be a snow concern now.
Well, that's, there wasn't a snow concern before because it's been there forever and no one cared.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, that's what it boils down to.
Okay.
Although, it was also brought up by the conservation resource plan, saying the snow storage should be reevaluated by the project team.
When was that comment? Was that the previous comment?
Uh, November 30th, 2022. The commission requested that the snow storage be reevaluated.
Yeah, so those snow storage areas are new. Those, that, that, that area wasn't previously shown.
And that no storage occur on the easterly portion of the site, meaning I would assume towards the railroad tracks.
Yep.
So where's the snow going to go? All to the other side where the hill is?
Yep.
With only five feet between the parking lot and the hill?
Well, it's not just there. You can also see that there's, there's the large storage area that's south of the dumpster. Maybe that was missed. There's, there's the snow storage that's, you know, west of the shed and dumpster area and then also in the back there. So, you know, those are pretty large storage areas. I apologize if I didn't miss, if I missed pointing those out. You know, again, the concerns we can't do is we can't push it onto the leaching field in the back. You know, there is a large area back there. And then we also can't push it into the drainage system that is where the no storage sign text is shown.
Actually, I'm just, I need to give you my opinion about, about that. So since I, since I started over in the business, so for, for the snow, we used to take all this area, just to put it, put it between, between the store and my, my house now. So this, in this area, so we, we used to storage all that, the snow. And all, all in the border of the road. And the other side from the other, other way. So we just push all the snow in the back. And the other side also, in the, in the back of the building, we used to take all the snow toward my, my house here.
Anybody else got questions?
Have you guys thought about changing the entrance along Brookside to equip the fire truck?
Yeah, I had. I tried very hard. We took multiple iterations there. It's the, the steepness of that slope there and then getting that to work around that corner is just, it, it's not the best layout. You end up having to pull that whole southerly area down, you lose a lot of your parking. You know, it, it impedes, you know, if parking's a concern, I'm trying to play the balance on a lot of this. And, you know, it's, if you look on the plan behind you, because you have to keep that utility pole, you could knock out all of these spaces here. And again, this slope right here, you know, is that.
I know, slope, you couldn't cut it and retain it with a wall or something?
We, again, it knocks out the, the spaces. It's not that those things can happen, but we feel that this is our best solution.
Along the railroad tracks, you guys are taking pavement away, right up there in the left, top left corner.
Yes.
If you kept that pavement, would that be enough swing for the fire truck to get in?
The fire trucks ends up swinging like here. So it's into these parking spaces that it, it takes a large turn to come around. So that, that's why there's that issue there, is that it ends up either, if we come in here, we take out almost all of these spaces. If we come in here, then it takes out, you know, our entrance spaces right here.
Yeah, it's because of the basket that overhangs the front.
Yeah, we would have been clipping a lot of cars.
And they just ordered another one, same thing, so.
Same thing.
Yeah.
David, questions, comments?
No, we had some, I guess there's no neighbors here tonight?
He's right there.
No.
Yeah, yes. There you go, the neighbor.
I mean, it appears that the site will be very tight, but I, I'm just trying to think of the economics of it. On that office space, what would you anticipate the number of people working in that office space? I mean, what kind of office activity do you imagine?
So if we're gonna, if I'm gonna find like accounting, engineering, whatever, so, you know, so I'm not, I don't have exactly a specific.
No, no, I understand.
I just think whatever you get in there for business, it's got to require multiple vehicles. Even if it's a civilian engineering firm, they got to leave their vehicles parked there overnight, which are going to take up parking spots.
Mm-hmm. That's true. How many employees do you have?
Me and my partner, other one, and another one.
That's it?
So, and the driver. So, but now I'm going to park in my, my house, so, so we get, we save one car now.
Well, you haven't convinced me that the second floor is a doable thing. So you've only got four of us here tonight. So my advice is go back to the drawing board on a one-story or withdraw or whatever you'd like to do, but I'll tell you right up front, I'm not in favor of the second floor.
So you guys can proceed, whoever you'd like.
So we could allow to continue, Mike, to, you know, another meeting, come back with some modifications?
Actually, I'm not going to do it again, so this is, it's for me exactly, so I was looking to an extra money to helping me for the, for the building. Especially I spend almost like four years now, no income, that's my only income. So since, since it's a good fired and I'm, spend a lot of money with the insurance, with the lawyer, with the, with the.
Engineering.
Engineering company, with my architect and a lot of stuff, I spend it, so I don't think so it's gonna, it's gonna worsen for me to, to build like a one building. Especially I'm still gonna own some, some, some money from the bank, so it's gonna, gonna be hard for me, so. And for the future, I don't think so it's gonna be hard.
You can ask them to continue and take some time to think about it.
If you can just help me for that, that's gonna be extra, extra taxes for.
What could we provide that could, you know, help understand or, you know, a performer of some sort to why the, you know, secondary property would be necessary for the, you know, income of the site and to make it a profitable, you know, project for him? Would, you know, something like that help entice the board towards approval to kind of help prove that, you know, there, there is some economic requirement?
I mean, I think we all, I'm speaking for myself, but I think we all want to see him be profitable and do well.
Exactly.
But maybe there's a reason why there was only a pizza shop there to begin with. Site is the site. I mean, you can't change, you know, you can't change the property lines unfortunately.
Yeah, honestly.
You know, and there's a lot of variables going on. I think if we could, we would, but there's just too many questions right now with that second story, with the extra parking you need.
Yeah, you know, again, parking is, yeah, I don't want it.
It's a tough site, there's no doubt about it.
Yeah, yeah.
But it's, once again, you know, neighborhood character comes into play. I just think that that, a two-story building there would be out of character of the neighborhood. Parking is an issue for a two-story building. Obviously, the fire department feels a two-story building is going to require a lot more as far as turning and radiuses and things like that. I mean, just to bring a sprinkler system into that building, it's going to be $70,000, $80,000. You've got to bring in a six-inch main for the water. I mean, it's expensive. So, I mean, those are facts, is that you have to weigh in. So, I mean, I don't, I just, I just can't see it at this point. Does anybody else have a comment? Does anybody else have a comment?
Well, is there, and I, I don't know, does he have an option if he cut down the size of the restaurant? If, for sake volume, to eighteen? He took out six. Could he still, and that would take some pressure off. Could you, could he still swing a two-story building?
Oh, it would reduce the size of the footprint.
Yeah, well, to, to make it more of a, a takeout, you know, to push, to push the onsite scene down.
Mm-hmm.
Do more takeout and still allow him to have a, a small seconds, a smaller second story. Or some other activity.
Have you entertained the idea of doing a, like a, a one-story, like, kind of along the lines of what Dave was just mentioning? Reduce the size of the, the pizza shop and putting the other use adjacent to it, keeping it a one-story building?
So the, the issue with that is again, the, you know, the existing area of development, right? You know, we are tight with our parking. We are tight with, you know, um, the impacts that we have there, you know? We're in the riverfront area, we're in the wetlands there, we're, we're, you know, vertical is where there is more space for us to really make the, the site work out, um, you know, and perform better for, you know, operations, you know, getting the vehicles in the back and, and, you know, uh, you know, allowing the amount of parking space. Again, you know, it was previously a big open parking area. There was no control of the vehicles, you know? P, uh, even the Google Street View, you can see people parking, you know, one's on one side next to the railroad, one's right in the doorway of the building, right? You know, so, you know, this layout, uh, you know, has more control over that and, you know, adding more to the side there. If we took that building and put it aside, there's no space between the property lines there really. Um, and then, you know, again, we're, we're not trying to recreate the wheel with the septic system that was there. We had, we had the inspection done. It's an existing septic system that works, um, you know, for, for the structure. The septic is actually oversized, um, you know, and, and, and is, you know, plenty to, to fit a massive amount of more seats, you know, um, so. It, it's, it's a tough, it's a tough site and, you know, we're just trying to, to come up with the best solution to make it work, to make it a profitable situation.
Anybody else have anything? Well, why don't you continue to the next meeting if that's what you'd like to do? You can go one-story, you can reduce the size of a two-story.
Scott, what's your hangup with the two stories?
Well, I, I just think that because of the square footage of the two stories, the parking is gonna be a problem.
Would, would there be a size, sorry to interrupt, would there be a size that you guys are looking for? Is there, you know, a, a number of seats? I, I know that's kind of tough to, to.
I'm not the engineer on the job.
Well, I'm working with you guys.
You have to come back, you, you need to come back with, with numbers that look reasonable. You know, do the math backwards like I did. If you go to sixteen seats, you know, that's eight cars. Three, you know, two, two or three employees, because he's gonna be successful and need help. And then, you know, that's gonna leave you ten, ten extra spaces, give or take.
But then you're still gonna have takeout going in and out.
Right, and you get takeout.
So you don't know how busy it's gonna be at one given time on a Friday night.
Right.
Yeah, oh, under- understood. Yeah, uh.
And then god forbid, there's a fire on a Friday night, one of the parking lot's jam, the fire truck can't get in there. I mean, unfortunately, we're looking worst-case scenario, and hopefully it never comes to that, but.
No, un- understood. And, you know, I was, uh, in my designs of the site, was trying to maximize all of those things, right? You know, and, and come up with what, you know, is the best solution for that, you know, and, and, you know, reduce the amount of pavement, you know, so that it, you know, it's a better environmental, but, you know, take out the pavement that wasn't, you know, helpful for the, the flow of the site, you know? We'll, there's parking spaces now, you know, that, that weren't previously there, um, while also reducing the pavement.
So have you looked at pervious parking spots?
So it's not as much the, um, actual land area, the, the pervious parking spots, you know? As, as an engineer, I personally am not a fan of those, um, especially in New England with assaulting and everything like that, you know? We, we could put gravel, a crushstone, and, and those types of things work, but again, that's, that's a maintenance nightmare. Gravel getting kicked up on the pavement all the time, everything to that extent, um, you know? Also, from the environmental perspective, on our landscaping plan, we were putting in all, you know, native, local species, you know, birch trees and things like that, that, you know, do well and would help out the environment in the area. So, you know, just taking out, you know, as much as it is, we're reducing per- impervious to impervious by putting down gravel, you know, on the environmental side of it, you know, there, there's not much of an exchange there, you know, um, versus really pulling out pavement area, drivable area, and putting in nice landscaping, you know, um, features.
I mean, I think you're, you're trying to bring another use in doubling the size of the building. And yet you're trying to maintain, and I understand why, you're trying to maintain what's there.
Yeah.
But you're doubling the use in, on the same square footage of plant usage, so, like we said, it's gonna be tight. And like one thing Scott mentioned during the beginning of the meeting, a lot of the two-story buildings in that area are older homes, and they have character. My opinion, this building's got no character. If you were to come in with a design that kind of, and you see it when you drive through your Sudbury's, your Waylands. They take two-story buildings, the first floor might be a restaurant, second floor office, but they look like a home.
Yeah.
You know, um, much more appealing to the neighborhood. Like I say, this is just my opinion.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, that's the first thing I noticed, I'm like, but didn't draw me in.
Yeah, we, we softened it slightly from the first revision, but, um, uh, understood that there could be some, uh, more progress.
And if it looked like, you know, two-story homes that are in that kind of general vicinity.
Yeah.
So what would you like to do?
Mike, would you like to continue? Come back with some?
So I have a question. So are you looking to reduce the seats inside and the same footprint? It gonna be the same or reduce also the footprint of the building?
Well, I think to make it work, you need to reduce the footprint of the building. But I mean, that's why I'm asking you if you'd like to continue to come back, so that your engineer can come up with some other designs as far as the size of the building. And then, then your parking's gonna work because you have less seats, you have less footprint, you have less office space. It all adds up. So I can't sit here and say, yeah, reduce the building by five hundred square feet. I'm not an engineer. That's up to him.
I mean, the other option is, and you would know better than I do, if you do the single-story building and maybe squeeze in a couple more seats and just do better with the pizza business to offset the rent you would get upstairs.
Cause I think you do a good business. It was always busy when I used to go in, before the unfortunate incident.
I think you come in the busy time, so you don't come in there.
You know what I mean? So if you bring it down to one story and sort of maximize the, the pizza place, that might be your other angle.
And don't make the decision right now.
Yeah.
Continue, continue.
We can continue, and if it still doesn't work, we can, we can withdraw, if that's not gonna make you happy, you know? Then we, we, you know, we, we, we can, we can close off that project. We can ask them to continue, and we can think about it. We don't have to make a decision.
Continue to the next month. If that's not enough time, we can continue to the following month, who will put you on for next month. And, and go from there, but, you know, there's a lot to think about here, and, you know, you, you wanna have some more options.
Actually, I'm worried, maybe next, next time, so we're gonna get more, uh, comments about if we reduce the, the, the side of the building, so.
Well, well, they've made their comments, right? Uh, we, we know what their, their, their ideas and what their thoughts are. I don't think that there's anything that's new that's going to pop up here.
No, no, nothing.
They, they, they have voiced all their concerns here, so, you know, us continuing, it, it's the scope of the building that is the, that, you know, reducing the scope so that we can, um, you know, get a better function of the site, you know, they're, they're concerned with it being overwhelmed.
Well said.
Thanks.
So are we gonna continue?
I think we can take, yes. Yeah.
You're the applicant, you're gonna say yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So can we have a motion to continue this to May seventeenth?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so you have some homework to do. You know what, what we're looking for, how we wanna see it. And if May seventeenth doesn't work, call Joe and said, can you push us off and we'll continue it till the next month?
We've gotten pretty good at that, thank God.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, gentlemen. Good night.
Have a good night.
So the next order of business is twenty-one, Boltwell Hill Road. Twenty-one Boltwell?
Yep.
Come up and sit at the chair and give us your name.
Sit at the chair. Open the hearing. Both Mr. Earl and Mr. Valcourt, I presume?
Uh, yeah, we're down to the, the big five, okay. So can we have a motion to open the public hearing?
So move. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So for the record, we're gonna seat Mr. Valcourt and, uh, Mr. Earl.
Okay. My name's Rob Book and set up astonishing decks. The proposed builder for this, if it gets approved, the owners had a cruise on the books for many months in advance before this meeting. So they get, I gave him a form here for owner authorization for me to, you know, work with him on that. I hope he sent it to you. Deb did, and so that I can answer any of your questions or concerns. I kind of guided him through the process from the mo- it was found out when I went over and said, you're not gonna meet your setback. So they currently have, um, and if you look at a, um, a deck, it's very small, it's about seven foot by fourteen. Their property line is thirty-six feet off the back, and the setback's thirty. This little deck you can't use for anything. It already is one foot into the minimum setback. They wanna get something they can use. The property completely is cleared all the way up to the, the wooded area there, so they wouldn't be disturbing anything new. So that with the new deck, they would, they're, they're instead of the thirty-foot, and I thought the building, um, the building, um, commissioner thought it might even be reduced to twenty-five because this was a very unusual lots in the cul-de-sac. That they were just very, their lot just has no backyard basically, you know, and because it's on the side of a cul-de-sac. And he said, that, I'm not sure if they, they, um, he wasn't sure if they maybe minimized it for that little circle. But apparently, from whatever they're saying, I guess it still is the thirty-foot. The deck we're proposing would, you know, reduce it, um, to nineteen and a half feet. There's gonna be four footings on it, hand dug, less than a, less than a half a cubic yard of dirt, which will be displaced and spread under the yard. We dig them with, with post hole diggers, so. So instead of this little one that comes out seven foot, it's the same thing, it's just gonna come out a little further and go a little bit more. And it, no neighbors gonna see it. It's just their backyard, there's no impact to the area. The only thing I can say it's gonna do is, I mean, not that this is gonna be revenue like that, the restaurant building, but it does increase the value of the home and the value of the homes of the neighbors. And, um, doesn't seem to do anything to impact anything in the front and the character of the neighborhood. It's all in the back. So they were hoping that they could get a, a special permit of variance on that, you know? So they could have something. They, they like to have a deck that they could just not walk out and barbecue on and then walk downstairs, so. You know, they wouldn't mind to have a dining table on it or something like that.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, it's, I mean, the land behind it also is part of that, uh, common owned property for the Boltwell Hill Association, I guess. And, uh, I can't see any harm in it, I mean, it.
Yeah.
Was this deck built at the time of the house being built, or was it added on?
That one I can't tell you. I was not involved with, I just know when I walked up to it.
Did you build it?
No.
Oh.
But I made a phone call to the developer of the, of the project.
Yeah, and it was built at the time the house was being built?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, you see the property and the elders hits that, all that, that, you know, land there, so there's. To anybody out here, it doesn't seem to impact at all whether that affects that back here, but it's already cleared, you know, and they're not gonna do anything. We're, we're hoping that would be a consideration that would work, so.
Any questions or comments from the board?
Pretty straightforward, yeah, pretty straightforward.
Okay, um, so I need a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So we are looking for a special permit uh, for the expansion of a non-conforming deck from seven feet fourteen to sixteen by seventeen feet, resulting in a rear yard setback of nineteen point five, whereas thirty is required in the RA district. I have a motion to that effect.
So move.
Second. Uh, David?
Yes.
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
And I will also vote the affirmative. So, um, they have fourteen days to write the decision. There's a twenty-one day appeal period. Uh, the decision has to be recorded at the registry of deeds, and you can start banging nails.
So let me see if I understand. Fourteen days to get the approval from you guys, and then there's a twenty-one day period?
From the time it's rec- we submit it to the town clerk's office, usually we're earlier, the fourteen days. But from, that starts the clock for the appeal period, and then once the appeal period's over, um, you can go ahead and pick up the letter from the town clerk's office. They certify that no appeals have happened. I mean, I don't think you're gonna have any appeals here this evening. And then you would get that recorded at the registry.
Okay, good. That's, that will make them happy, so, uh, and I told him, I said, you don't wanna miss these meetings. He goes, well, we got a cruise, we've been it for months, so. Anyway, I, I don't know if she'll get a text, cause he's out on the ocean or, or whatever, but I will let him know, and I do appreciate all you guys' consideration.
Okay.
He's got a tough job, that's, like that engineer, he's got a tougher one.
Yeah.
Oh, God.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All righty. So.
Here comes that little last fourteen days, gonna get recorded. How will they be aware that it? So we will, we will notify usually.
The owner.
Yeah, the owner, letting them know that we submitted it to town clerk.
Thank you so much. All right, so the next thing is the draft decision for Broughton Road. Everybody read that?
Yes.
Did we miss anything?
I think everything was pretty well covered. So the only. Aware, was reviewed by town council. The council approved it, the applicant did review it as well after town council had reviewed it. They were fine with all the conditions in there. Did check, uh, the, I think, I believe it's condition number three, um, which talks about the planting of the trees, that landscape buffer you all were looking for. To check with our conservation resource planner, there are some provisions, um, for native plants to be planted within the buffer. So in the event that it did have to go, uh, in the buffer zone, that could be an activity, um, that could be exempt. And they wouldn't have to go in front of the permission for that. But either way, he's happy to work with the applicant to see whether or not they wanna keep it out of the buffer or if necessary to have a, you know, a good screening, um, to meet what you're looking for, if it did have to go in the buffer. If it did have to go in the buffer, it would be a, a, you know, an exempt activity.
So, it is exempt?
As long as they stay native. If they don't, if they try to go non-native, then it's a different story, but if they want to plant some native trees.
Okay. So, that kind of takes care of that issue then. And there was no conservation issue with the fence, was there?
Not that he brought up, but again, I'm happy to keep him involved, um, and if there is, then we're happy to address that with the applicant. They weren't concerned if they did have to go in front of the commission for it, um, but you can, you can certainly follow up.
Can you see, ten PM? For non-emergency?
Yeah, I just see that- Under general conditions, were you reading?
Number four. Did we approve this at ten PM?
No, I think that was-
Usually it's seven to seven, right? And then, emergency-
The original one.
Is that the original one?
Seventy-five? I think that was the timeframe that was on that one.
So, with the next, with the exception of emergency, that seems like a lot. Because if there is an emergency, snow related activities, then they can go at any time, correct?
Right.
I'd go seven to seven, is that what you're thinking?
I'd say eight at the latest.
Yeah, especially with the DACA months. How does everybody else feel about that?
I'm fine with that.
Seven to seven?
Seven to seven?
Seven, eight, whichever you guys feel.
I would say seven because then, then they have the snow emergency or, or emergency activities that they can get in there anytime, so. So, can we change that to seven to seven on site-specific conditions, number four?
Well, this would be something that would be a change, and we'd have to check with the applicant to see if they're amenable to that.
Yeah, I would ask them.
And then, do you need a vote on this?
So, if they are amenable, we could always make that change, since it seems like the board would be happy with the decision letter. If they are not, would you like them to come to your next meeting?
I mean, I guess that's the only thing they can do, right?
To discuss the, to discuss that one condition.
Yeah. I just think ten PM's too late.
But if they're amenable to that change, then they can just do it in-house, and not bring it back to us, yeah.
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 If not, if they want to discuss it with you, we can have them attend the next meeting.
Yeah.
All right.
We're all set with that? Uh, let's see.
Got a motion to accept this with the exception.
Do we have to approve this, uh?
That couldn't hurt, um-
Okay.
Caveat if they wanted the stuff to-
Except with the exception of item four, changing from dead to set.
We have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we got a letter here from our chairperson via mass housing on Alder Point. And, uh, that's all been approved, I guess. Joe?
Yes, they had one change that they have offered, um, on the overhead calculation, um, as the, their, you know, independent accounting review, uh, went through. But even with that change, they were meeting all the conditions in terms of the limits of the profitability that they could have on the project.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, they just offered that as, you know, one change to be consistent, um, with up, with their practices. But noted that otherwise, everything would still be in compliance.
Okay. And so, do we have to vote to approve this?
Um, just if you had any other comments, um, we could relay it, no, you would just accept it as correspondence.
My only comment is, it's always amazing to me how these numbers always work out. David always comments on it, too. How do they get these numbers to work out?
That's their business.
What surprised me a little bit was the price they bought the land for. It strikes me that that was quite a bargain.
Sat over there for a long time with nothing. There, there was a house on it, I think, wasn't there?
No, no, no.
Yeah, there was, there was a house on it.
But it was two ninety-five. I mean, they paid two ninety-five, I think, for the land and got eight houses, eight units?
Plus, when they bought it, they'd stand on it for about three or four years before they
Well, I got the other, the other guy who was the good neighbor got forty K for his little slice of pizza.
A septic deal, yeah. So, that was, that was two thousand fifteen, that was almost eight years ago.
But still, what a, what's a buildable, a buildable lot in Westford?
If you can find one, it's going to start at four hundred thousand.
I think, well, it's, you know, but, but, but it's a bunch.
Oh, yeah?
And, you know, I guess, you know, I think there would be a premium, I would suspect for a pond view and so forth and so on, and-
Mm-hmm.
I mean, they got, although that's on Route Forty, which is a madhouse, they really, once you've got in there, they got a lot of privacy and they all front the pond, huh?
Yeah, it's a nice little development.
Sitting there, nice, yeah?
So, I mean, I remember we were trying to get them down to six, but we failed. Again.
Yeah. All right, anybody else have anything? If not, we have a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?